will now be recorded.
So Jamie says we're all set, Larry.
Thank you, Joe. Let me open again the Harwich Board Selectments Meeting for November 16, 2020. We did open the meeting at 6 o'clock and then went into a executive session to discuss reputation, character, and physical condition of mental health and regarding if it pertains to discipline, dismissal, or complaints against the public officials. We had that discussion and agreed to appoint Mr. Powers as our hearing officer to pursue this issue. Secondly, we discussed a strategy session regarding the potential agreement of the non-union personnel. We've reached consensus to move ahead with that and left that back to Joe to take additional actions. We just then closed the executive session and moved back into open session. To start that, I ask you, and this is a little cumbersome on the go-to meeting, but to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The time delay makes that somewhat confusing. Moving then to weekly briefing. Joe and I guess Megan and Cindy, your usual gang, will address that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to take the reins, if I could, and start out by getting into COVID-19 as it relates to this kind of meeting and then hand it over to the real experts to talk about the information that they have. But I'm looking in the direction of our Public Health Director because I know she'll back me up on this. But as the board knows, I updated you last week that after a series of calls with Department of Public Health and press conferences by Governor Baker, I felt it was appropriate for this board to work remotely based on the guidance and directives of DPH. And we've done so this evening. However, I'm thrilled to let you know that, and this is where I'm looking for Megan. She'll know that on one of the DPH calls, I was the one that asked the question if the governor's orders relate to town halls and town governments. And the answer was yes. I believe, based on another community client, Attorney John Giorgio of KP Law was able to provide notice to his clients that they've since gotten confirmation that the order does not pertain to municipal governments insofar as you do not have the general public. So Megan, I'd look for this kind of a reaction or this kind of reaction on the following statements. I think the board could resume your meetings in the Griffin Room. That staff could participate, but that we would not be in a position to have people, as we did in previous meetings, joined from the general public for executive session or anything else. So we could, in fact, resume the meetings if the board wanted to. However, before I yield the microphone, I would also say that it's the appropriate time to consider whether the board would also want to engage in a hybrid meeting, meaning that any of you that are so desiring to appear in the Griffin Room could, and any of you that would still want to appear remotely could. And I think that between myself, Jamie, Caleb, Megan, and others, we've been at this for eight months, so we've got go-to meeting down to a science. And I'm sure that we can accommodate any mechanism by which the board chooses to me. But bottom line message, when you meet on the 23rd, if you're so inclined and Megan tells me I'm correct, the board could meet in person in the Griffin Room.
Tom, I sort of like the, we're having a surge problem at the moment. I sort of like sending this message and being extra cautious, but I'll let others comment.
Hi, Larry, if I may?
Yes.
I think it's important for the board to meet in person, and I think the Griffin Room, we're allowed to get a lot of distance in between, but comment from the public in the past when we were meeting remotely was that they wanted us to get back to public meetings and converse with each other openly. So I'd support going back to public meetings. And again, in the Griffin Room, we can get 10 feet of separation or more if we wanted to, especially with the public not being there. So I'm a fan of meeting in person.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Larry?
Don?
Just quickly, I just want to agree with Michael. It's important that people know that, to the maximum extent possible, we're still there for them.
Okay, good points. Steve and Ed, comment?
Are we still required under the governor's regulation to wear masks in the room?
Megan is indicating we are not.
I do like that because I found that I think people had a hard time understanding this with that restriction.
That's in general, Larry.
Jim. Thank you, Steve, Ed. You're muted. Well, it seems like the consensus is we should move back to the Griffin Room, Joe.
Larry, if I may?
Yes, Michael.
I think Joe said it best. I think a hybrid approach would be great. And then if any board member didn't feel like coming in, they could call in. I think the hybrid model works. And just to respond to Stephen, I have no problem wearing a mask in that room if that made Stephen feel more comfortable. And then as long as I could pull it down when I speak, which is the direction Joe gave us two weeks ago, I do think that that works.
Okay, good.
I appreciate that, Michael. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on then. We'll figure on meeting in Griffin Room unless someone, a member has objection, they can stay at home and do the go-to meeting, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. At this point, I'll turn it over to Public Health Director Megan Eldridge for her standard COVID-19 update. Thanks for your patience, Megan.
Sure. Going on that, going back to meetings, the gatherings order, you're not exempt from, which means you can't have more than 10 people in there and you have to be done by 9:30. So hopefully that's not an issue with your agendas, but you'd have to be able to disperse at 9:30.
I take that as a positive, Megan.
So you have a time limit. Sometimes, sure, yeah, meetings sometimes can run long, but if you keep that in mind, you have a hard stop at 9:30 until that gatherings order is raised, then you should be in good shape. And we'll take a look again at the room and make sure the camera angles can work to get everybody in the picture as well as we can and try to get you as far apart as possible. So our COVID numbers, if you've been watching the news, they have been going up. And Larry, you're right, we are seeing a trend towards a second surge. Barnstable County is included in that surge. We had, just between Friday and Sunday, almost 80 new confirmed cases on the Cape and 31 probable cases. So those are those cases that are done with the antigen test instead of the PCR test. So about 100 new cases just in two days on the Cape. And then today, Barnstable County reported another 18 cases. So the region is seeing a surge. The town is at a steady one or two cases a day, but that's a lot more than we were two months ago. So we're starting to see a trend towards a surge again in the local areas as well. Cape Cod Hospital now has six patients with COVID and one in the ICU. And Falmouth has two cases in their hospital with COVID. So we're seeing that trend going in the wrong direction as well. Across the state, the positivity rate is sort of steady because it's the collective number of tests in the entire state. So the state's positivity rate is 3.17. And Harwich, as of Friday last week, our positivity rate did go down slightly to 1.7. So we had two new cases over the weekend. Our total's up to 183. And we're seeing clusters. One positive in a household or at an establishment or business turns into two or three others. They may not live in town, but we're seeing people are inside. So it's easy to spread from one person to another if you're inside and you're not socially distancing. Our incidence rate has stayed the same though, at 4.5 new cases on average per week. So again, it's the time of year. We're seeing everyone go inside. And gatherings, if you look at the curves, it's pretty interesting to see Halloween was on the 31st almost two weeks ago, and you can see a clear rise in numbers. And now that it's been more than two weeks from then, we're sort of steadying out. So it really depends on the gatherings. And one or two positive people can really spread it to many, many more. And in my memo, my weekly update, there's just some things people can do to prepare to return home from college or out-of-state travel. There is the order to either quarantine for 14 days when you get here or get a test to make sure you're negative. Quarantining for 14 days really isn't ideal for a college student who's only going to be here for a couple of weeks. So if you can have an honest conversation with your college students and tell them to avoid the crowds and the parties for the next week, and then they can come home and confidently take a test and have it be negative so they can attend the family dinners and everything. So it's just a little bit of pre-planning to make sure everybody's safe around the holidays. The travel order was updated to include New York. The state of New York is now a higher-risk state. So really, in New England, it's just Vermont and New Hampshire and Maine that we are able to travel back from. I know Vermont has a very strict travel restriction. So coming from Massachusetts into Vermont, you would have to adhere to their travel restrictions where you'd most likely have to quarantine once you got there or take a test. And it's looking like Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine are trending towards being higher-risk states as well in the next week or two. So if you have any travel that you want to get up to up north, it's probably this week, maybe your last week before you'd have to do the travel form. So we're just, we're seeing the second surge like what we had anticipated. Happy to take questions.
Megan, I have a comment and a question. I'm beginning struck by the table we had last week of 80-some percent. I didn't do the exact math, but coming from household sources. And I had a discussion today actually with Tom at that now we're closing the restaurants and bars at 9:30. There's a tendency for people to say, well, let's move this to my home and we'll continue, which is a wrong reaction. So it's, you know, we need to remind people that it's still households are the, right now, the major factor we need to control. My question is just curious, if you look at the map of this week, you know, where the rate you talked about, Chatham's actually at the next level. How does Monmouth handle that when they, when you have two, you know, two various different rates to go to the same location?
So what we usually do, what we have done, I can't say usual because nothing's usual. We look at where the cases are coming from and if they are impacting students or teachers to make any decisions on whether we need to tighten down remote learning for kids. And thankfully, the last month or so, we've had very few positive cases that have impacted kids at school or their parents or teachers. So when it doesn't impact the school, they don't have to do too much. So if, when it happens, we will have a conversation with Chatham and decide how to best keep the kids in both school systems safe.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Other comments, questions?
Okay, Larry, Steve Ford.
Save, yes.
I think we also ought to just, and I'm sure Megan was happy to hear this too, but hit on the good news, and that's that Moderna is very successful in their trials for the vaccine. So, you know, we got some very promising news down the road, as long as we all, you know, keep our nose to the grindstone and make sure we socially distance and, you know, do the sanitizing of our hands and the masks. I think, you know, the future is looking a lot brighter.
Yep, thank you, Steve. If not, again, Megan, as usual, we thank you for your work in this, and we'll unfortunately keep in touch.
See you next week.
Thank you, Megan.
Joe?
Mr. Chairman, before I recognize the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to take another opportunity to speak to this matter. And Cindy and I have talked about this, but one of the things that we're working on in staff is we're now starting to hear from license holders. So these are liquor license establishments, typically restaurants, that are seeking to close for a period of time. And, you know, the regulations that we have don't distinguish between seasonal and annual, and I think that's appropriate. But I just wanted to remind everybody that the liquor license regulations require any establishment that's looking to close for a period of time from their license, that they first have to just notify the local licensing authority, which of course is you, the board, and that they should state their reasons for doing so. I've become aware of at least one establishment, and I'm sure there are others, that would simply be looking to close because of the winter months, the impact of COVID, and it's going to be more expensive to stay open than it is to close down for a period of time. But I did want to use this opportunity just to remind the licensed establishments that before they take any action, they should do the required step in accordance with Section 107 subsection L of the regulations, liquor license regulations would say that if they intend to close, they should notify you. So I'll be working with staff to just work with the restaurants to make sure we can accommodate that through the board. And I'm having a conference call tomorrow with AVCC to see if there's anything that we need to do in relation to their license as it relates to the state, or as I suspected, this is going to be left to the municipality to do locally. So more on that to come up, but I just wanted to remind everybody of that.
Thank you, Joe.
And with that, I'd turn it over to our Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce.
Larry, if I may, no comment?
Excuse me, Cindy, Ed, Michael, comment?
Larry, I just, I mentioned that I did have a restaurant reach out to me with that very request, Joe, and I asked them to call the administrative office, but asked them to put into writing why to the Board of Selectmen. And I just would like to publicly state now, for any of those that are watching, that I would obviously support that. If any of you have been by some of these restaurants during the week, you know, the staff cars are in the parking lot and that's it. So it's a big ask to ask them to stay open for the winter.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree, and it's a good reminder because in the past they've done that, but it's been for remodeling and some physical, not the COVID. So I'm sure, Michael, we all go along with that. Cindy, floor is yours.
Great, thanks, Larry, and thank you, Michael, for that because that is one of the big things right now, that they are all readjusting and trying to figure out what to do so that they can all be back with all of us next year. So I appreciate you all, once again, listening to this. Just a few things, the businesses are forging ahead as best they can. Many of the retailers, of course, are getting ready for the holidays. Believe it or not, in about two weeks, we would have been celebrating the stroll, which unfortunately will not be happening. I still continue to get questions on that, but no, there is no holiday stroll this year, but there are other things that we are doing. Many are virtual. We have Santa in one of our banks in a drive-through, so we're keeping everyone safe, especially as we continue on through the surge. So instead of taking up too much time here tonight, I do want everyone to just go to our website. It has everything that we are able to do and that we are doing, many things throughout the entire town of Harwich. So there are seven villages. Each one will have tons of holiday cheer for everyone to enjoy. But if anyone has any questions, they certainly can reach out to me at the office. Just a couple of things to mark your calendar. Saturday, November 28th is Shop Small, which is the kickoff to the holiday season for everyone. Stores have virtual shopping online if you do not want to go into their stores, but certainly everyone is continuing to practice safe shopping and socially distance. And that is the theme of the kickoff with American Express. So I will leave that for now, and certainly anything is on our website as what we are doing. So any questions, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. I guess we have none, Cindy, so we'll move on. You'll probably be back with this later agenda item.
I'm sure.
Anyone here for public comment? Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, as you'll, I believe it's in your packet, but Town Engineer Griffin Ryder is on the line, and he did have a flyer that he wanted to speak about ahead of the board meeting next week. If that's okay, I was going to share the screen for the flyer and then just defer to our engineer.
That's perfect. I have the flyer. I guess I didn't figure out quite where it was going to come into the agenda, but Griffin, you wish to move ahead then?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. So we've been, as you know, we've been working for years now to try and get some movement on a sidewalk connection from Sacagawea Harbor to Harwich Port. And we've continued to talk with MassDOT on numerous occasions, and we've, as we've done that, we've gotten some different news. And I think a lot of it comes from a new directive, an engineering directive, that may allow this project to be viable and not have to go through a full reconstruct with sidewalks on both sides of the street, bike lanes and all that. It seems like it's going to be possible to build a sidewalk on just one side of the street. The south side is what we've been looking at. But what MassDOT has asked us to do in an effort to move this forward is to have a public meeting or to have a meeting to allow for public input. And, you know, we'll basically document this input, you know, show MassDOT that there is support for the project. And with that, we can move forward to the next steps, which would be to submit to MassDOT as part of their project review committee meeting, which is in the end of January. So that's it, I'm happy to answer questions, but the real presentation will be next week.
I think you've answered mine. You'll have the details for next week then to, we can discuss.
Sure.
Michael, you have your phone?
Yeah, Joe or Griffin, is there a way to drum up the past public hearings on this and the support that the town had? I know Link Hooper was very involved in this, but there was a tremendous amount of support for this project. And I fear now that people aren't joining the Zoom meetings as they joined our meetings in the past about this topic.
Link has been working with me on this, and we have reached out to the folks that have supported this in the past, and they are gearing up for next week. So we're hoping we have a good input next week. But we will go back to the other stuff as well.
Hey, good. Any other comments? Steve, I know you've had some discussions periodically. You care to comment on this?
Not in any great detail, but, you know, some of the reason this has been able to move ahead is there's been a, one particular resident of the town who has come forward to offer a very strong financial support for this. And we may not need it in the end, but I think that certainly helped move the ball forward. So we'll be talking about that more as we go along on this. But it's an exciting project, and I really hope we can get this done.
Thank you, Steve.
Larry?
Yes, Ed.
I finally realized I wasn't unmuted, so. Well, one of the things, one of the reasons why I'm very much glad that we'll be meeting in public is because it's hard for me to have the agenda open and the materials open and be able to read it and keep up with what we're talking about and have the Hollywood Square screen up, only having one screen. So it's hard. I'm very much glad that we'll be doing it in public and having the Hollywood screen, square screen that faces up on the board rather than having to try and juggle them both on a single small computer screen. The other thing, if you remember, at the Selectmen's Association meeting on Friday, Andrew Gottlieb from Mashpee commented that his director of health in his town has been providing to his selectmen there the weekly notice and information sheet from the county health department on the COVID issue and commented that he found it very useful and very informative and suggested that we ask our health directors to provide that to us. And if Megan is still on the line, if you could do that for us, I would much appreciate it.
Thanks, Ed.
Sure, I can forward that over to administration to have in your weekly packet.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the agenda for next week then, from Griffin or Joe? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda.
I moved that we approved the Caleb Chase request in the amount of $587.93.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Don? Don, you're muted. Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we'll record that as 4-0 at this point?
Yes. Don, do you realize you're muted? Okay, we'll carry on then. Next on is new business. Yeah, discussion of possible voluntary mooring license agreements. We have three of them. Joe, you wish to? Read us to this discussion.
This is actually going to be tabled.
I have to postpone that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We just want to make sure that we have all the documents buttoned up before it comes back to the board.
Okay, thank you, Joe. We'll table that until, Don, I'll give you a chance to hold on the consent agenda?
Aye.
Okay, so 5-0 on the consent agenda. A is new business tabled. Joe, just a follow-up, when do you think you'll come back? Will that be a date certain or you have?
Yeah, the only thing we'd be looking for is just to execute the actual agreements from the parties to then bring it to the board for the board to finalize. So it'd just be a matter of making sure we have all the agreements signed by the parties and have all their paperwork. I could say we'll shoot for the 23rd, but I don't know where we are in that process, but I know it wouldn't be too long for us to get that completed.
But it's not time sensitive, so we could just say two weeks and be on the safe side then, is what you're saying?
Well, I can't say two weeks long because the board's not scheduled to meet in two weeks.
Well, three weeks the next time, okay. All right. Item B is discussion and update of Real Property 203 Bank Street and 5 Bell Snack Road. Joe, you wish to start this discussion as well?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the board. Hopefully you've had a chance.
Joe, I'd like to start with the Bell Snacks first.
Sure. Hopefully you've had a chance to review the memorandum that I provided for you folks. First, regarding the Bell Snack Road, that's map 10 lot G1. It's two-thirds of an acre, and its last assessed value at the time I accessed it was 140. And its last assessed value at the time I accessed it was $145,600. As you know, Mr. Chairman, folks have expressed an interest. So I was directed by the board to begin the research process for an RFP. And what I've discovered is that there were two actions. Obviously, I'm paraphrasing the actions. But in 2006 Annual Town Meeting, Town Meeting voted to transfer the care custody, management and control of that land and buildings to the Board of Selectmen for a specific municipal purpose. And that purpose was for leasing on a long-term basis. Two years later, 2008, at the special town meeting held in the annual, Town Meeting then voted to quantify what was meant by a long-term lease. And that would be a lease for a term of not more than 99 years. So the first question I have for the board is recognizing that there's these votes from Town Meeting. And I know there's interest generally in the community for someone to acquire the property. At this point in time, the board doesn't have the authorization from Town Meeting to dispose of by sale. If we were to do anything, if you were to direct me, the RFP could only be relative to seeking lessors for a period not to exceed 99 years. So on that one, my question is to the board, do you want me to draft a warrant article for the 2021 Annual Town Meeting to seek to change the municipal purpose from lease to sale or any other action?
Larry? Comments? Ed, go ahead.
There's also, and I can't be specific on which year it was, but there's also a subsequent Town Meeting article where article requesting to demolish the building was presented at Town Meeting and it was voted down.
Correct. I found that in a future Town Meeting. I didn't add that merely because the present action that's still on the record is the lease of the land and the building. And since Town Meeting didn't take that action, I didn't want to add it. And I didn't mean to obscure that. But I was aware of that action by Town Meeting. Or I should say, the motion that was not adopted by Town Meeting.
The general sense at the meeting was that the voters there were seeking to make sure that the building is preserved as part of our architectural heritage.
Thank you, Ed. Other comments?
Larry?
Don?
I mean, I'd be curious to know what the interest was in purchasing, but just as much, I just have a question. What's the difference to the town if somebody were to lease it, even if there wasn't a lot of revenue towards it? And they took over the upkeep and maintenance of the building and took the responsibility off our shoulders? So we don't have to worry about the alarming? We wouldn't have to worry about the liability insurance? Practically, what's the difference to us?
I'm going to turn that back to Joe.
I guess my knee jerk reaction would just say the, not to be Captain Obvious, but selling it, you get money that can be used for whatever purpose. Leasing it, you then get into a completely different arrangement. What I wanted the board to focus on tonight is whichever you want me to do, because if the board still wants to proceed with a lease, I need to do an RFP to that regard. If the board was looking for an opportunity to sell it to any interested parties, I would then need to work on a completely different mindset of an RFP.
Larry or Joe, this is Steve Ford. There is a group that is interested in purchasing, correct?
That's my understanding. And that's what excites me.
My understanding is that they actually have the wherewithal to do it.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah.
I'm excited about it because it would take it off our rolls finally. I think the group you're talking about, Steve, is committed to keeping the structure intact for us to, Don, to your point, maintain the historical aspect of that structure. But then build within to make it useful. So I think it's an opportunity to clean our books and get something off of our asset list that just costs you as much as the moment.
And to preserve it, so that's, yeah.
Well, that's, this is Ed. I mean, that's one of the things that I've sensed the public have been wanting to happen is that it be preserved. And the problem with just putting it on the market is without providing, I don't know what sort of restriction is possible to be put on it? Could the building be preserved? But without that, whoever purchased it could, the day after, file for a demolition permit.
I think we can protect that, but Joe, I've talked about that some. Joe, do you want to respond to Ed's concern? It speaks for a lot of people.
Well, again, as regard to sale, the sale couldn't happen at present. This Town Meeting has not authorized the Board of Selectmen to dispose of that land or that building in that manner. So if you were to entertain the concept of sale, it would require, I believe, I can, the other action I can do is seek opinion of council. But my understanding of procurement laws is that the disposition that was directed, that the board was directed to take by Town Meeting was to lease. So if you want to sell, we have to get that approval from Town Meeting. If the article was general enough to change the purpose for the Board of Selectmen to sell, Town Meeting could indicate to the board that they would be looking for the board to sell it to somebody who would be looking to preserve, protect and care for both the building and the land. And if Town Meeting were absent on that, the board could still take that authority. And that would be shaped by the RFP that I would work on that the board would approve before we released it.
So can we put on a deed restriction or something that protects that once it's sold?
Yeah, I don't know that it would necessarily be a deed restriction, but there are any number of actions Town Meeting and or the board could take to ensure that if the disposition is sale, that the seller, excuse me, that the buyer understands the obligation is we would only sell it with the understanding that they would preserve and care for it.
Yeah, Larry, Steve Ford again. We may just want to have a discussion with the group, which had contacted me. I don't know whether they contacted anyone else, but they're part of that West Harwich organization. If they'd entertain doing a 99-year lease, I mean, you know, that might be something they do and we could get this to move ahead more quickly. And they could commit to the renovations and upkeep, maintenance and all of that. So that might be something we want to entertain.
Okay.
Larry, that's the answer to the question I posed earlier. What is the practical difference to us? The difference to the town is probably negligible. It really boils down to, do they want to lease it or they want to buy it?
Right.
And I would just want to add, I would just want to add for the public record that while the board can talk about prospective tenants or prospective purchasers, we would still need to go through the competitive process of RFP. And I, as your procurement officer, couldn't make any guarantees that anyone would prevail.
No, but the conditions that we want to be imposed in that RFP, keeping it in its current, I mean, keeping it in its historic state, those types of things are generic.
Sure. I don't think we're going to have people falling all over themselves to do it, so.
Larry?
Yes, Ed.
Question for procurement officer. If we lease the property to a group because in essence, it still remains the ownership of the town, would that group be restricted to use the public procurement processes for any improvements in maintenance and upkeep?
So that's a sticky wicked question that I wish hadn't been asked yet. You know, the materials that I've read and recently been retrained on, the inspector general's office, you know, is going to offer general guidance. I think it's possible that we could construct an RFP that leads to a lease that could cause that. It would just have to be buttoned up very tight and made sure that ample notice was given to all parties. So it's possible, but we need to be very precise in the language that we use to do all that.
That's a good question, Ed, because it greatly affects the cost of restoring the building.
And, you know, if this is a group purchasing it or leasing it, I know they always will look to getting certain things done by volunteers and donation, which is very problematic to do as we learned in building the snack shack at the high school with the public procurement rules around buildings.
Larry?
Okay. Well, Michael, you haven't waited in, excuse me, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the answer to that last question is no. We can lease a building to somebody and not, they wouldn't have to go through. It would be their building, it would be their lease. They wouldn't have to go through the procurement process. We did the same thing with the lease that we did on Howard's Junior Theater. That subject came up six years ago or so. And I think the topic was lack of maintenance and lack of work. But all the original work that was done on that building was done through fundraising. Don could probably answer that better, but Howard's Junior Theater paid for that and there was no procurement process. So a lease is a lease. I would certainly support selling this building, but to Joe's point, it's got to go on the open market. I think we've got to do a procurement process. And how restrictive we make that, to me, would just scream that we're doing this so that one group gets it. Somebody could purchase that lot and building and make a historical house out of it because it is zoned for housing over there. So, you know, I think the best course action is to take it off the books and sell that to Joe's point and get some money back in the town coffers. And take it, to Larry's point, take it off the rolls and get somebody in there that will pay taxes on it. But if we do choose a lease, that procurement process wouldn't prohibit anyone else from bidding. So this one group that's interested, a mystery group to me so far, and I don't know what they want to do with it. I did have a quick conversation with Duncan Berry on this. But we do have to, we do have to make a decision, I think, sooner the later, so Joe can do a warrant article if we want to sell it. But I would certainly support selling it, putting it on the market and letting people bid on it.
Well, that's obviously where I come out. Is there others' opinion? Can we? Can we ask Joe to move ahead and see what the warrant article looks like?
Sure. Could he also double back to that group and ask them if there's any divide in their minds about, yeah, I'll do this, but I won't do that?
Good point. I'll see what I, yeah, I'm sure Joe would agree to that. They're an easy group to contact. Michael, to your point, I think someone's had some very brief discussions with Duncan, probably the same as yours. They haven't quite, my understanding is they haven't quite decided what they want to do. My main question was to maintain the historical structure. So I don't know if there's more in there or not, but I'm not aware of, you know, their thought process going beyond that.
The sooner we lease it or sell it, the better. We've been talking about this for a long time. And it's been vacant for 25 years or more. Holes in the roof. We're paying to fix, so we shouldn't sleep on this any longer.
I'll tell you how long it's been, Michael. I was the vice chair of the West Harwich School Building Committee in 1995. Tried to decide what to do.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion so we can move ahead.
Yes, Larry. Very quickly, before you do that, because this comment pertains whether it's lease or sale. I did have conversations with folks that have indicated an interest in the building and the property. And I just advised everybody that whichever mechanism we use, I think it's prudent to put language in there that indicates that at the time of RFP, it's the intent of the town to either lease or sell, whichever the case may be, the land and the building. And should an act of God cause the building to no longer stand, it would still be the will of the town to lease or sell, whichever the mechanism would be. And I think just what everyone said, given the aging condition of that building, and I'm not wishing anything upon it for sure, but I would hate to go through all the effort and then have the situation changed. So I would be looking to account for any conditions that may occur through act of God in the RFP, regardless of whether it's sale or lease.
But what do you need tonight, Joe, for a motion to go ahead and make the warrant article for Town Meeting to get permission to sell it?
I think just based on that, Selectman McCaskill, if that's the will of the board, that to just be a vote to direct me to develop a warrant article to change the special municipal purpose from lease to sale relative to that property.
So move.
Is that your motion, Michael?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'm good.
Other discussion?
Larry, it's Don. I'm just wondering why we wouldn't wait until next week so they can have that discussion inside which way we're going. I can understand. I want to do this as much as Michael does because it would actually end my career with that building. But, I mean, ultimately, I'd kind of like to know if they're receptive to this rather than that. Otherwise, it's just an academic exercise. If we can wait one week, we could probably get the move here.
My argument against that, Don, is that this is the writing of the article. We still have to move ahead with it. And I do think that time is in essence, we can decide whether we want to actually adopt it. And there are points, there's some work involved to do this.
Larry?
Yes.
You know, we have until, what about the 10th of February to have the article prepared. I think we could wait a week to query the group in West Harwich on their intent.
Larry?
Michael?
My motion is the same. You know, all we're doing is saying sale or lease. We're not making any decisions. We're giving the town administrator some direction to prepare a warrant article and not waiting any longer than we've already waited. It doesn't change anything except for it gives us the ability to sell it or lease it. If the group is interested and we have a conversation, it still has to go out for procurement. Doesn't mean they're going to get it. So to be fair to all of the residents of town of Harwich, let's change the language of the warrant article to say sale or lease. And it gives us a lot more options. But why wait any longer than we've already waited? We talk about things for years.
That's a different article, motion than when you first made. Your first motion was to change the lease, change it from lease to sale, not lease and sale.
Now, Joe said sale or lease, and I said so moved, correct, Joe?
Sorry, what I was trying to indicate is that a change from lease to sale.
To sale.
Not lease and sale.
So why wouldn't we do?
I'm with Michael. Why wouldn't we just amend the language in the warrant to say, authorize us to sell and or lease?
That's fine with me, but the way I heard it was we were going to change it from lease to sale, which would have precluded the ability to lease it.
I'll change my motion to sale or lease.
Okay, I have some reservations on this, but go ahead, Joe.
Well, I just want to put out there that I understand, I think I understand where you're all coming from. And to just go back to the original purpose, I had heard from the community that there were people that were interested in buying the land and the building. And so that's the purpose of my question in the memo, is does the board want to lease it? Does the board want to sell it? So I appreciate this motion because it gives clarity that the board would be looking to ask Town Meeting to do either. The other part, though, that I want to put on the record is I have concerns about having future conversations with interested parties because I would hate for the town to be accused of prejudicial actions. You know, as your procurement officer, I need to be dispassionate and objective and impartial. And I'm merely looking to establish an RFP. And I'm merely looking to establish an RFP process on behalf of the town for the board of selectmen based on the purpose that is created by town meeting. So I, I think I know where you're all coming from, and I think the motion that you have pending before you is more than enough for me to move forward, but I, I hesitate to have the conversations for fear of any future accusations or prejudice.
Well, that's all right. If Michael's motion is the way it is right now, they have the opportunity to go and pitch their position to town meeting if they, if they've got an objection to one way or the other. I'm all right with that as long as it allows for both.
Or, Larry?
Yeah, I said, go ahead.
Or they have their, their right and ability to come and pitch their position to us two weeks from now if they want.
This motion is pretty, pretty wide. It allows us to go in any direction, really.
No.
Yeah. It is. I was hoping we'd give a little more direction than this, but I see that's where we are. Would you have a motion in a second?
We do.
I'll take a roll call then, Don.
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
I'm actually going to abstain on this, because I was hoping to be a little more, a little more decisive than we turned out to be. I wanted to move ahead and, and get this on as a useful purpose before the building falls down.
And then, if I may, before you proceed, so the, the net effect of that vote is to direct me to establish a draft warrant article for 2021 Annual Town Meeting that would change the purpose from lease to sale or lease. Is that accurate?
That's, that's correct.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, folks. Moving next to, Michael?
Just to comment on your, on your point about the building falling down. You know, we already have permission to lease it, so if we want to put this on the agenda for next week and have the board vote to, to put on RFP to lease, we can do that. So whether the building falls down or doesn't fall down, we still have to go to town meeting and get permission to sell it if we vote next week to sell it. So I think that the motion really just gives Joe a warrant article for us to sell it. My, I, I would rather sell it and lease it. I think it's time the town is done with the property for whoever buys it. So if it falls down or not between now and town meeting, because we can't do anything until after town meeting anyway, other than we, and, and I'm willing to have that conversation next week if you want.
I think we should come back to that, Joel, and see where we are. Okay, thank you, Michael. Moving next to Bank Street, the old fire station property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep, so as you'll see in the memo, with regard to 203 Bank Street, which, as you all probably knew, but I discovered, actually pertains to four lots in and around 203 Bank Street, which was the original former fire station. As you'll see in the memorandum, there's an article, Article 34, that vote to authorize the board of selectmen to sell 203 Bank Street, used for general municipal use as surplus property. It talks about the, the lots that are there, the total acreage, and that it indicates that the proceeds of the sale are to be used to offset capital costs to construct the Harbor Masters Maintenance Facility at Sacquetekin Harbor. And then two years later, there was a vote of town meeting as it relates to capital items that the sum of $60,000 be appropriated for remediation and demolition of 203 Bank Street, and that the capital outlay application for that article indicated that, quote, "Town meeting has approved the sale of this lot to a conservation entity," end quote. My question that I have in the memo for your discussion is, regarding 203 Bank Street, is it the board's understanding and expectation that the sale of the four lots at and around 203 Bank Street be sold specifically to, quote, "a conservation entity," end quote, as outlined in the 2019 capital outlay application? So I'm just seeking the board's input and direction on that question.
My opinion is that the top dog in this show is the town meeting who voted to sell for private use. See, I don't think the capital outlay committee has the authority to direct how we, how we sell the property.
Larry?
Yes.
I, I would argue that what we really need to do is get the records from the 2017 town meeting and see what the actual motion approving this article was. Because I know there was a lot of discussion about the sale, and I believe the motion was amended.
And I have that. I actually have that motion in front. There was an amendment at the time that the, quote, "to move the board selectmen to authorize to sell the property described in the article and that the proceeds be deposited in the sale of land account." That was seconded, and then it did not pass. So that didn't, wasn't directed towards conservation at all. It was another action. And that's the only, my records, that was the one motion that was there.
It would be easy to get the records from the town clerk on what the actual motion that was approved was.
Okay, this is from our town reports. I'm hoping it's correct. The motion that was, the motion that was approved, if I can read it, was "to move this article to be accepted and adopted proceeds to be deposited in sale of land account to be used to offset capital construction" as per Article 20 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting. As Joe said, the, the article itself, to pull again, I requested the board of selectmen, well, excuse me. The last sentence, the last sentence, "building and land will be used for private purposes." And then Joe referred to the first part of that, that was used to help offset the costs of the moving the Harbor Master Maintenance Building to Sacquetekin Harbor.
Mr. Chairman, if I can build off of that, and I'm not sure how, but if you can see the document that I'm holding, this is an annual book that the town clerk creates post-town meeting. And as you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, it's got the full text related to Article 34, which talked specifically sale of town-owned land 203 Bank Street. And then separate under Article 20, the article that talked about fund the construction of Sacquetekin Harbor Landside Renovations. And that article explanation, Finance Committee Report and Motion with subsequent amendments proposed goes on for two full, two and a half full pages. The point of my memo in this discussion tonight is, and, and I certainly have no issue sharing all of this. It's, it's on the website, town's website under Codes and Reports. But nowhere in this is the phrase "conservation entity" used. So there was nothing I could glean from the actions of town meeting in 2017 that directed me that this was, the purpose of this was for a conservation entity. It's not until you get to the 2019 article that I reference Article 12, which I think was Item 3, and that does not have the backup capital planning article where the application in that says town meeting voted for conservation entity. So I can, I can continue the discussion and provide more information, but it's not going to change the record thus far. And then I guess, if I may, Mr. Chairman, my last point on that is I'm endeavoring to follow the board's directive to dispose of surplus property that is real, real property in buildings. And so that's, this is just my sort of check-in saying this is where I'm at, and if the board could give me direction or guidance. But to this particular question, I find nothing that compels the board or would compel me to sell it to a conservation entity or to establish an RFP for sale. That's why I'm seeking the board's direction and input.
It also, there's no reason that we cannot sell to a conservation group.
Correct, and we just have to expressly state it in the RFP.
Okay.
Larry?
Uh, Don?
Yeah, I mean, this is not going to get as specific as what Joe wants, but I'm just going to express my own frustration that this is a continuing theme where we oversell and, and under-deliver with things on articles. Where we wind up saying an awful lot of stuff, if you do this, then we'll get that and this, and you'll, peace will break out on earth if we do it. And what's concerning to me is, and I'm going to say something in the procurement section over this if Michael doesn't, but in general, we, we go through this all the time. We sell, we, we sell something to town meeting based on all bunch of things that could happen, but the actual text of the motion doesn't support that. So, I mean, to a certain degree, I mean, I was part of the public at that point in 17. You kind of feel snickered when somebody tells you if you do something, you'll get that. And, and by the way, the conversation did kind of, it did come up about a conservation entity because it's adjoining something else we're working with them on. It may or may not be where we go, but I'm just saying that, you know, in the future, geez, I really like it. We don't promise stuff that's not in writing.
Yeah. I agree. Michael?
I, I remember this clearly, and the, the, there was certainly conversation at town meeting about selling it to conservation. There's certainly been a fair amount of emails with the expressed interest in us selling it for conservation. A lot of those emails happen to be from a butters. I do know people in other parts of town that support the conservation, but to give Joe direction, bottom line is town meeting said to sell it. And as far back as time, we have a problem selling anything. So we did get authorization to sell this, and, and I think that we should direct Joe to put an RFP out, and we could add a preference to conservation. But I think we all know there's one conservation group would be interested in this property, and it's Howard Conservation Trust. And I don't see how we would be doing any service to the, the whole of the taxpayers of town of Howard not to explore what the, what this value would be to other organizations besides just the one conservation organization. So I think we should put an RFP out with a, with a preference on conservation, not one we have to take and judge, see what, see what interest we get.
All right, we remember, remember this town article is 2017. This is 2020. Other comments?
I would, I'm going to make, I move that we direct the interim town administrator to put an RFP together for sale of 203 Bank Street.
Don, you're muted.
With a preference or not?
We'll put the preference in.
I'd like it to be an option so that we, it's clear what we're.
With a preference of conservation.
Second.
Other discussion?
Larry, can I just ask if Selacman McCaskill can just repeat it, just on the motion and second?
I move that we direct the town administrator to put an RFP together for sale of 203 Bank Street with a preference of conservation.
Thank you.
And that was my second.
And, and that's Don's second. Other discussion?
The only comment, Larry, the only comment I have, the only comment I have is I mentioned preference. But if, if we only have one bidder, I mean, I think that, you know, we have a great working relationship with Howard's Conservation Trust. I don't want to put the town in a position where it's negotiating with a single entity. So I think that the RFP needs to be broad. And then, once we get responses to the RFP under the procurement laws, we do have the ability to make a lesser bid more advantageous to the town based on what the benefits, the overall benefits to the town. We don't just have to take the highest price. So that would be broad.
If I may add, that's a good point, because we had several years ago, our town engineer at the time did site plans on that, and I think there were, my memory serves, there might have been four lots. There's reason to think that we might have, you know, maybe a couple of those and others to help out with parking along for the trails going into the Cold Brook. So there are various options on that that we could use to benefit both the town and the, and everyone involved. So that's a, that's a critical point, Michael, that we have a good discussion. If there's no other discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So Joe, I think we keep adding to your plate, but there you go.
Well, to be fair, I did ask for it. Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I would like to just state, though, I, I have a, I think I have a clear sense of what the board is looking for, and I would just want to establish your expectations that what I'd like to bring back over a period of time is a proposed RFP that gets to this vote that puts a value on conservation use as one of the criteria for success. And there's a couple of different ways that we could go with the offering that could accomplish money back to the town, could accomplish conservation use. And I didn't hear any restriction on that, so I look forward to, to building something for the board to review before we go forward. Thank you for this, for the action, though.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Next on your agenda is, I think, Joe, you're going to comment briefly on Item C, proposed reorganization.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned at the top of the meeting, I did have a chance to present to the board elements that relate to executive session. And so I'm not prepared this evening to go forward, but that shouldn't be taken as lack of progress. On the contrary, I have clear direction on what next steps I could take. So I would respectfully ask that the board table this matter to be brought from the table at a future meeting.
Yes. I assume everyone's in agreement with that. If there's no one commenting, I'll assume that's true.
I, as a technical matter, Larry, don't believe the right route is to table something. That's, that means something. I just assumed, I just assumed, take the item off your agenda that are, as an action item and do it in the future. You got to, you have to actually vote to take something off the table later.
Okay, so your point is we just won't discuss it tonight. We'll discuss it later? There's no formal action?
Put it on a future agenda.
Okay.
If I could just add, Mr. Chairman, that it was my intent for the board to then take a future action, to take it from the table and then to take it up at that time. But I will yield to the will of the board.
Mr. Chair?
Ed?
You can also make a motion to table to a time certain. And it eliminates the necessity of having to have a motion to remove it from the table.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
I need guidance on this. What's the best way to proceed?
I, I will withdraw my request and just defer to the board that this will come back before the board in the future.
And, and Larry, you, you as the chairman have the right to say, I'm going to talk about this tonight or I'm not. So just.
Thank you, Michael. I'll take my prerogative then and decide not to discuss it tonight. I should be all-powerful, Michael. Thank you. We'll move on. Next to the, next item is the, the sale of NIPs. Don, I think you're the one that was requested this last meeting.
Yes, thank you for calling on me first, because I'm somewhat aghast in the, the package. What I'm going to be talking about is just NIPs, even though the, the ruling seems to show that you can do it with single cans, single cans of beer or two. But for that, I say, what's the point? Because. for that, I say, what's the point? Because, uh, you could buy beer in a thirty pack, uh, case, the twelve pack, and you could separate it and it becomes a single. Uh, NIPS are a superior category and we're, we're really getting inundated with trash. As a former driver's instructor, I have to say, I'm somewhat off put by the idea something that you know is designed to chug and, and cough, uh, is, is actually encouraged in, uh, in a liquor store because you're not allowed to have an empty container of alcohol, which is, I suppose, what the purpose of the nip is to get around it. I know that flasks used to be in, in, uh, in use years ago. Um, and I was casting about to try to find something that's not as nuclear as during the town meeting with a ban and a, uh, a, uh, a bylaw change. And it's, it appears that this is legal. It's just a question whether we want to do it or not. We can condition in a blanket way that no package license, uh, uh, covers the sale of NIPS, in which case no one's being prejudiced. I gather, I understand that other towns uh, might still do that, but I'm, I'm taking this as an approach from doing the right thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, this, this item came up. It was a subject of discussion at the Slakman's Association meeting on Friday. Um, the town of, uh, uh, Falmouth, um, has actually, they passed a bylaw um, at their representative town meeting. Um, the neighboring town of Mashpee is, uh, taking the, the, doing the process of, in their renewals of package store licensing, they're going to prohibit the, the sale of, uh, of, uh, uh, NIPS. Um, uh, by license. Um, they are however, uh, they had a, they brought this up last summer. And based on the, uh, response from, from the, the public, uh, primarily the, uh, store owners, um, they gave them a challenge of asking them to come up with a plan on eliminating the trash. Uh, um, uh, as opposed to having them banned, um, at the recent, uh, uh, Slakman's meeting several weeks ago. I'm not sure exactly which week. Um, they brought it up again. Um, they're, uh, the, uh, stores had not, not presented any plan, uh, uh, for, for, uh, eliminating the trash of the NIPS in the town. Uh, so they moved ahead to indicate that there'll be uh, by license renewal, uh, banning the sale of NIPS, uh, allowing uh, the, uh, retail owners six months to sell off their existing stock. And, uh, with the, uh, final, uh, suggestion that if in that six months, the store owners do come up with a, uh, workable plan for eliminating the trash of NIPS on the roadways, that they would consider, uh, rescinding that portion of the license restriction. Um, uh, at the meeting, there are several of our neighboring towns that have been, have expressed an interest uh, in, uh, moving ahead with this, in this round of license renewals. Um, and I think, uh, uh, we should, um, I'm going to be reaching out tomorrow to a couple of the Slakman in different towns. Uh, to see what their plans are and I'll, can provide a report back.
Thank you. Other comments?
Um, I don't even know how to say this. Yeah, yeah, if, if, I, I think we've, quickly moving into this, you don't like it, ban it. Um, and, and I think that, that, um, has anyone contacted any of the stores? And I asked this question of our most recent plastic bottle ban, but has anyone contacted any of the stores and asked them what the economic impact will be on their stores based on this ban? That would be number one. Number two, um, I know we have a strong relationship with, uh, Senator Seer as well as Senator Peak. Has anyone reached out to them to, uh, to put a plan together, put maybe a, a twenty five cent redemption on these NIPS, which would certainly give some of our, uh, our homeless something to do. And, and, um, I, I think in a quarter, if you're paying a quarter, you less have to throw it out the window. But I think we're, we're very quickly getting into, if you don't like it, ban it. And we want to blame trash. What percentage of the people actually throw the trash out their window? And I asked this question, I, I think of the last, the, the petitioner on the plastic, uh, bottle ban. What's next? Uh, and I, and I read something the other day that, uh, that the comment was that, uh, America has an obesity problem, so we should ban Hostess cupcakes. I, I really think that we need to get, um, education and, and to work again with our legislation and put enough of a redemption on these things where people won't throw them out the window. A quarter is a, a, a good piece of money. But I, I don't know, um, why we're jumping immediately to banning. And, and I don't think either of the organizations that are pushing all this for not reaching out to the businesses to ask what the economic impact is going to be. And that's an economic impact on all of us because those are taxpayers in our town. Uh, their customers are taxpayers and I, I think this is short sighted and certainly nothing that I could support.
Larry? Uh, Michael, let me just re- respond to Michael. Uh, I think if, uh, uh, the meeting I had referred to, I think in Mashpee and Falmouth, they were coming up with NIPS, maybe around, uh, uh, twenty percent of sales, maybe twenty to thirty percent. So it is significant. The second point you made, I, I would hate for us to do, make any action without inviting the stores to appear in front of us, at least argue their side. I need to move just unanimously, uh, tonight with no, without that input that, that has been suggested. Don?
Actually, I totally agree with you on that point. Uh, I floated this at the MMA meeting, uh, a year ago, uh, Ed knows. Uh, and I did talk to a lot of, uh, selected in, in different towns, and I did talk to Julian and, uh, 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 and Sarah. Uh, I absolutely agree that you, we should at least have license holders, uh, do this. But the flip side of this is nobody's, I mean, where do you suppose people are drinking this stuff? I mean, I'm, I'm convinced on the trash end of it alone, but you don't buy a nip so that you can bring it home and, and mix a drink for yourself. Uh, most people do that because they want to be able to open it up quickly and drink it quickly. I mean, it's not the same as a Hostess, uh, cupcake. No one's going to get involved in a tr- in a traffic, uh, accident because they ate too many Hostess cupcakes.
I don't know about that, but the, uh, that's, that's certainly an assumption, Don, because I don't, I, I don't, uh, I don't drink my NIPS in my truck and I certainly don't throw them out the window. But if somebody brings some, a, a package, which by the way, you don't just buy NIPS singly, you can buy a, you can buy a, 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 a vacuum packed package of sixteen or twenty NIPS, um, but people use them for celebratory reasons. They'll do it at a, a party or a, or a wedding or any number of things. So, uh, they use them for a measured drink amount for making drinks. Uh, let's not assume that everybody goes to the liquor store and buys a, a, a nip and gets in their truck and chugs it and throws it out the second they're past the house. That's an assumption. And again, we're going past education. And we're assuming, we're assuming things and we're not looking at economic loss. We're not looking at anything. A certain group of people doesn't like it, so they want to ban it. And that's really what this comes down to. And I, I would say that every town meeting going forward, mark my words, there's going to be something new for them to want to ban. Started with plastic bags, got into plastic, uh, water bottles. Now we're talking about NIPS in anticipation that there'll be a, uh, petition article on NIPS. Where does it end on? Uh, my, my little toothpicks that I use for glossing my teeth, uh, I found some of those on the side of the road before. We're going to ban those next? Uh, Seagull could pick it up and choke to death. I think we got to educate people. And again, work with the legislators, put a reduction on these things that are significant. That way other people will walk around the streets and pick them up for us, for the few people that drink them and throw them out the window. But I, I'm not going to, uh, buy into the, the people buying these things and driving around and chugging them and throwing them out the windows. There's a lot of other uses for them. And twenty to thirty percent, Larry, that's a great number. That's a lot of tax revenue because people are going to go to the next town over and buy them anyway.
Larry, this is Cindy.
Cindy, that you're my end, please.
Hey, thank you. So yes, I have reached out to a couple of the stores. One of our owners happens to be on tonight. But I'd like to also, I've been talking to some other people about this. What if you did something like their vendors could then sponsor recycling bins in some of the hotspots that are they, the highly deposited out the window kind of thing that Don is speaking of? You get that Ed came up with a great idea, challenged the business, the different liquor stores to have come up with an idea, something like this, the redemption. This is especially during this pandemic. We're going, we're trying to support our businesses. Granted, we're not. But we need to also think of how this is economically hurting them as well as the town too. So if we come up with a challenge, get some other idea to clean up the trash. Maybe have a couple of days that we go out, like when we clean up the different parks and the trails. Get a community and involvement in this to help clean up, but also like Mr. McCaskill just said, put a redemption on it. You're going to get a couple of people that are walking around anyway, having a nice little treat for themselves. But let's think of other ways before we just cut everybody off at the knees and say, nope, we're going to tell you, you can't sell fried food now. It's a little extreme. I know my analogy, but it's all I could think of. I'm getting a little hungry. But let's, let's think first.
But Larry, Larry, she's bored. Yeah, I mean, I, I hear, I hear what Cindy's saying. But why we would have to clean up after these idiots is beyond me. Um, I get an average of ten to fifteen plastic nip bottles in front of my house every single week without fail, every single week on the sidewalk. And it's a shame. I mean, I think, I think Ed's idea, a challenge is a good idea, but I also just want to add in, you know, the idea that, you know, we, we have to take responsibility for people who buy a nip, drink it and throw it out on my lawn or on the sidewalk, uh, is, is appalling to me. It's a, it's a real commentary on our society. Larry?
Yes, Ed.
Um, you know, some background, um, Paul Hebert, who's a, a town counselor in, uh, Barnstable and, uh, um, actually he, uh, ran a, uh, uh, a redemption center, uh, for bottles and cans. Um, has long advocated, uh, for, uh, putting a redemption value on NIPS. Um, he has been advocating that for probably the last three years. Um, and has come to the conclusion is, uh, a redemption program would have to be sponsored by the state. Um, that there is absolutely no interest in the state, uh, setting up the bureaucracy to, to do that. And from his own, uh, endeavors of running a redemption center, uh, which the state, uh, through their lack of support, uh, uh, for developing recycling, uh, markets, it has become entirely uneconomic uh, to operate. So he's closed his, as have numerous other, uh, individuals who ran redemption centers uh, on the Cape, um, uh, has come to the conclusion and, uh, the, um, apparently the Barnstable Town Council will be taking up, uh, the issue of, of banning, uh, NIPS, um, uh, in their license renewals, uh, in the coming, coming weeks. Um, you know, I, it's, uh, to, you know, there, there are, uh, you know, if, if, uh, to come up with a challenge, which I think, uh, Mashpee has done. Um, and, uh, if we, if we were to, uh, move forward with it, I think that obviously involving, uh, the, uh, the store owners in town is, is an important step to take, but also, um, uh, offering them a challenge, uh, to, uh, address this, uh, um, trash problem. And, you know, Michael, it's true. We have, uh, year by year, uh, identified an item, uh, that we've banned. Uh, plastic bags, straws, water bottles, et cetera. But what's the, the common denominator in all, all of those items is the plastic and the intent is to get the plastic trash out of our environment. Well, you look at, there are still some nip bottles that are in glass, but the large, the greater majority of them are in plastic.
Ed, I would just, Larry, if I may?
Sure.
Ed, I would just comment that that's your agenda, not my agenda. And the, the, uh, twenty to thirty percent may be insignificant to you because nobody has come into your business and taken twenty to thirty percent of your sales away from you. Um, and I would, I would venture to say that's several of the people involved in, in your agenda. As far as Paul Hebert goes, um, you know, all of his statistics and everything that you just said about Paul Hebert was prior to the movement to ban. Uh, uh, I think now you, you probably find these liquor stores uh, and people that sell this stuff that is getting banned and they're losing twenty to thirty percent of their sales. We're going to get a lot more people involved talking to our legislators and maybe, maybe we'll, uh, we'll, we'll get some headway on that. But I, I don't agree with the, the agenda of you don't like it, ban it. And I think for every piece of science that you want to put out there, there's science that, that goes against it. So I, I don't, again, wouldn't support it. We could debate it all night. Um, but I think people are getting tired of the two hundred and fifty or so people that show up at town meeting or seven hundred and fifty people banning things for everybody. And I am personally insulted that nobody took the time to go and speak to our businesses before that happened.
Well, uh, I'm sure they wouldn't support moving tonight till we have a businesses an opportunity to appear in front of us. I, uh,
Larry, I would objectively be putting it on the agenda. I would like to get the discussion started, not ended.
Right. And we can bring that back. I, you know, I show my age. I grew up in a state where it was a brown bag state. And the, uh, the unintended consequence of that, uh, was when they, uh, or the, uh, in a positive sense, it's when they, uh, started a law of drinking, uh, people drank less because they didn't have to finish the bottle before they, uh, they got home or went somewhere. Uh, it could be if we ban NIPS, the only thing that we find on our beaches would be pint bottles. So we need to give some thought to what we're, what we're doing here. Yikes, yikes. Yes, who's, uh, speaking?
That was me, Larry. Just, just my reaction. Once, once again, I mean, I do think, you know, I understand all the arguments and I agree, let's bring the businesses before us. I think that's a good idea. But, you know, we also, th- there is some, some personal responsibility that needs to be pointed out here. And you can't deny that the nip bottles are all the hell everywhere. So, you know, uh, we got to do something. We got to think about it in some way to create a, a resolution.
No, I agree. We have a problem we need to solve. I, uh, but this scares me. I, I just want to be careful with it.
I'd like to weigh in, I'd like to weigh in for, if I may.
You may.
Um, so my name is Joe Gallinari. I own Cranberry Liquors in Harwichport. Um, when I bought the store fifteen years ago, I, I told a buddy of mine that I'm going to get rid of NIPS. And he looked at me in awe and he says, well, how am I going to be able to have a cocktail when I go to the movies? And, you know, that was, it was kind of funny at the time. But I think what I've come to learn in fifteen years is that there are a lot of people who rely on the nip size for some very significant reasons. They, economically, this is how they manage their money. And it's also how they control their portion. It's, it's just part of what they do. They know that if they bring a full bottle home, they're going to drink a full bottle home. And, and so I think we have to be sensitive to the community at large in terms of, you know, how, how they're doing it. I, I don't think that every nip that I sell ends up on the street. In fact, I'd love to do a little bit of math on that because I think it's really, it's a fraction and it's probably something on the order of ten percent. Don't quote me on that number. But it's probably like ten, not like ninety. So to Mike's point, you penalize a lot of people for the actions of a few. Um, and, and another point that was sort of alluded to earlier is if they can't buy NIPS, they're going to buy half pints, two hundred milliliters instead of fifty milliliters. And if they can't buy a half pint, they're going to buy a pint. Three hundred and seventy-five milliliters instead of, you know, ten, fifty milliliters. So it, it, it might be shifting the problem. I think the last sort of piece of food for thought. So i- i- it might be shifting the problem. I think the last sort of piece of food for thought that I would put out there is, you know, if they, if they can buy it in the next town over, they're probably not going to throw it away in the next town over. They're probably going to throw it out the door the same as they ever did, you know, creatures of habit. I, I've thought about the problem for years and, and wondering, you know, what is the right solution? And I think it would be good if, and I would be happy to sponsor, you know, some sort of efforts like by the Boy Scouts or some, some groups like that, where they just do some community policing a couple of times a year. Um, and it's not just limited to nips. It could be Dunkin' Donuts cups or Dunkin' Donuts bags, which I see regularly on the side of the road as well. I would be happy to sponsor something like, I don't have the manpower and my back unfortunately doesn't support a lot of that type of spending over these days. But if we could get some of the youth in our community to, to contribute actively, I would fund that. You know, whatever makes sense in that sort of constructive way. Um, and again, I get it. There are a few idiots and they pitch their stuff out the window because they don't want to have, they don't want to get caught by an open container law. But I'd say the vast majority of the nips I sell end up in the garbage where they belong.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, can we agree, there's a problem, and can we agree to bring this back in the future agenda with the, uh, uh, more business input? Larry? Uh, Joe, is Adam okay with you? Uh, Don?
Yeah, just one, one tagged what Joe just said. That I thought about this long and hard and I'm, I'm actually more aligned with Michael and you, Larry, uh, in, in most things about people, uh, being, uh, held accountable and doing what they do, uh, and not telling them what to do. However, the reason I came to this conclusion originally, I still feel is valid. The thought of this is not to be as immutable as a bylaw change, uh, that you'd have to go back to town meeting and get them to agree to flip, uh, the, uh, the bylaw. This would be done by vote of the board in my mind. And if it turns out that it's not achieving the result we want, the board could actually uncondition the same licenses. It doesn't get codified in the same way that some of these other things do.
Okay, uh, Joe, are you comfortable, uh, we can organize to bring this back?
Uh, sure. Is there a sense of the board as to when you'd want it brought back? And is there a change in the topic, uh, meaning for the board to consider, um, amending liquor licenses to affect this? To, um, seek a warrant article to create a bylaw? You know, I just wonder how, how and when you want this brought back?
I have no interest in a bylaw change, not at all. When I brought this up, it was specifically to mass condition licenses so that we could undo it if we made a mistake.
I would, I would like the agenda to be somewhat broader, Joe, and be licensed or other, uh, possibilities of controlling the problem. You know, this, this, uh, let's see what, uh, what all is out there first. On how to control the problem.
But I think we need to agree, Larry, in order to make sure that we invite into the room people who might feel otherwise, including the others.
Exactly. Right.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the reason why I ask the timing question is if you're looking to effect some action potentially on the licenses, you'll be renewing licenses in December. Uh, if, if there's a thought to do that, that's one item. If the board is contemplating potentially doing some action by regulation, you could amend your regulations and do the hearing process and all that. But that would then circle back to the licenses you're issuing.
No, I think if I hear Donna and others, we, we're not interested in going beyond the license aspect.
Hey Larry, I, 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 this is Steve Ford, if I could. I, I don't think we're there yet. You know, we, as you pointed out, you want to hear from the businesses is more, there's much more that has to be considered, I think. And to give directions to Joe tonight, you know, any specific direction, I don't think, you know.
No, we need to leave our options open and bring a discussion back and we'll see where we go. But Joe, to your point, I don't think we can do that in a week or two. We're going to be in some difficulty.
If you don't start, Larry, somewhere, you're never going to get anywhere. So that's the reason I have it on the agenda.
Larry?
Uh, Ed?
Yeah, uh, as I mentioned, I'll be, uh, actually meeting with, uh, several selectmen in neighboring towns the next day or two. And, um, I'll write up a report on what I've, uh, found, uh, to be our neighbors', uh, issues or plans, uh, on this subject in their towns. And I'll provide that report to the selectmen. It may provide a, uh, a hint of a way to move forward. Because I think, I think having this done, uh, in more than just a, a single town in a regional area, um, is, is, is much more advantageous than having every town, uh, on, on the Cape, having a whole different set of regulations. Um, and, uh, procedures on, on their take on dealing with the, the problem of trash and nips.
Uh, Joel Dalab, uh, do you think your, uh, your cohort would be, uh, ready next week to, uh, discuss, uh, uh, their view on this?
I have no idea. And it's only because I just found out about this the day before yesterday, uh, courtesy of Cindy. Cindy, you might have a better sense of, of, uh, what the other folks might know at this point.
So I did reach out to our members. I can reach out to everyone again. Uh, Joe was the only one that did come on to the meeting tonight. Um, we have two of our liquor stores that are members of the chamber. The others are not. Um, there are two others that are liquor stores. And I believe in Harwood Center, the convenience store would also have a liquor license. Whether or not they sell nips, I don't know. Um, but I'd have to look around, see who else does. I do have a list of our licensing, um, the licenses. So holders, I can, uh, try to reach out. Can we push it not next week, maybe the week after? Or is that one that you're not meeting?
We're not meeting.
Okay. Um, sure, I'll work on it.
Well, Joe, what's that? Do, do, Joe, should we wait for, that'd be three weeks now, not two weeks. Is that too late for the, uh, licensing discussions?
Which, Larry, which, uh, to which Joe are you speaking?
Yeah, Joe Powers, sorry. Your job, your one's Joseph. I'll, I'll clarify that.
There you go. Um, I, 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 I think it's too late if the, if the action that comes out of the discussion is to impact upon, uh, the license renewals for the next year.
Okay, let's try to bring it back Cindy, uh, for next week then.
I don't know how this happens. Every week I end up with more work from you guys. Thanks.
Just to make sure it's clear, um, I have to have my license renewal information in this Friday.
If, if, if I may, Larry, what, what, what happened this all of a sudden? Don, Don, Don brought this subject up to get it on the agenda. How, how all of a sudden are we talking about next week? Businesses to come in when this, and, and I don't think that was Don's intent. And as far as licenses go, Joe, we issue the licenses, right? If the board makes a change three months from now, we could change the licenses, right? We are the licensing, local licensing authority. We can change anytime we want, right?
You, you could. There's several steps you'd have to take. You could also change your regulations during the course of the license period as well.
Okay. So my point is we don't have to make this decision next week. That would really open.
That's not it. Let's take our time and get it right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Everything that Mike said is exactly true. That's how I feel about it. I just wanted to get the conversation rolling. I didn't expect it to happen this week.
Uh, 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 okay.
Thanks for taking next week off of the table as well, because next week is going to be a very busy week for me. Thanks, kidding. Not nips, wine.
Oh, that's good. That's good.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that too.
So, Mr. Chairman?
We'll find something else for you to do. Joe?
Is it okay to defer this one then to the, when the board wants to bring it back?
E- exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to the next item on the agenda, which is the, uh, draft budget.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, uh, and it should also be in the public packet. So as of, um, as of the writing of the, the agenda, I was hoping to share, uh, draft message with the board. Um, I've since shared that with the board and the department heads. But what I would like to do is, um, really just bring everyone's attention in the community, uh, to where I'm at with the budget instructions that I've pushed forward to department heads and will release to the committee chairs. Um, a- as you, as you all know better than I, you know, the budget instructions is an annual message that emanates from administration. Um, it certainly gives guidance to the department heads and committee chairs as to when they should be inputting their budget material into Munis as we progress towards fiscal year 2022. Um, but given the significance of the instructions that I've created, I thought it was appropriate for me to, um, bring it to the board's attention. Um, I, I would ask to retain the expanded control on the right to issue the instructions as I see fit. And then you hold me to account later on when I present the budget. Um, having said that, I would like to, um, go through the pertinent elements of the memo if that's acceptable to the board.
Joe, go ahead. Who's?
That was Ed.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yes.
Uh, your memo, because we got two, two versions of the packet. Do you know if it made it into the first version? Or was it only in the second one?
I, I believe it's the second one. You'll know the difference because the one says draft, the other one says, uh, doesn't say draft and has my signature initials.
Okay, I'm on the first one and I see the item on the agenda, but there's no item in, in the packet. So it's on the, the updated packet?
Uh, correct.
Okay, let me, I'll have to open that. Go ahead with what you're doing.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you to the members. Again, these are instructions that are built off of the, uh, budget message that the board adopted recently. And informs my, uh, my guidance to give to staff and chairs as to how, uh, they should be approaching their, their budget deliberations and preparations for fiscal year 2022. So, um, as you'll see in the memo, I've reiterated the fact that the board has directed that the starting point for budget development for fiscal year 2022 is for level funding. And I've reiterated the board's statement that this, this directive is intended to provide some much needed fiscal relief to Harwards taxpayers, uh, during these difficult times. And then, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, within that section of the memorandum, um, an actual definition taken from the Department of Revenue's Division of Local Services, um, which I think is helpful for everyone to understand. Um, I've already reviewed this with department heads, but I think it's, uh, worth, uh, repeating this evening. Um, unless there's objection, Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead, please.
So thank you. The Division of Local Services has defined, uh, for municipal governments, a level funded budget as being the same appropriation given to each municipal department for the new year. And they further state that a level funded budget is tantamount to a budget cut from the prior year. Now, that's not earth shaking and I would not suggest that the board change its position. I just want to make sure that everybody in the community is clear what it means when we say level funded budget. Because, uh, beyond that, DLS indicates that even a level funded budget must cover increases in mandated costs and other fixed expenses, usually at the expense of the general government operating budget. And so what I've alerted department heads and will alert committee chairs to is the fact that as they're getting into their budgets, level fund, equals or equates to budget cuts. And the fixed and mandated costs could have further impact on the development of their budgets. Uh, within the memo, I talk about some of the mandated costs and other fixed expenses. Um, as you know, uh, the board voted and it is the intent of the town to add more than $541,000 back to the stabilization fund, which as we all said, was used as a mechanism to help balance the budget for fiscal year 2021. So I've accounted for that reimbursement, for lack of a better word. Um, additionally, I'm advising, uh, department heads that presently I will be recommending, uh, in the budget, that the town resume OPEB funding, uh, which is my understanding, the town has been on a disciplined regimen for several years. Uh, but was unable to affect an OPEB contribution for fiscal year 21. Uh, in conversations with the finance director, I've determined that, um, as a starting point number, be looking to add $125,000 for fiscal year 22 for OPEB for that year. And an additional $125,000 to true up from what was left off of fiscal year 21. Uh, other fixed or mandated costs that might have an impact on the budget development. Um, you remember that the fiscal year 2022 capital outlay projects that were previously presented and approved by the Outlay Committee. So those are the projects that were anticipated to come up normally in fiscal year 22. In addition to those, the fiscal year 21 capital projects that I deferred from 21 to 22. Another fixed or mandated cost is a, uh, debt obligations that we've already incurred. And those typically are relating to the comprehensive wastewater management plan, also known as the sewer project. And, uh, in discussion with our finance director, we fully anticipate increases in health insurance for employees and retirees. Um, Barnstable County Retirement System Assessment is expected to increase. Non-health insurance costs, including property and liability insurance, workers' compensation and automobile insurance. And lastly, any negotiated increase in, uh, step increases, longevity, as well as any other costs that may relate to previously negotiated bargaining agreements. So all of that, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, leads to, um, I think a departure from previous years, to put it mildly, and perhaps to understate the matter. So with regard to cost of living adjustments, um, I've enacted the following budget instruction. Any budget carrying a salary and wages expense line, with the exception of the Police Department for dispatch patrol officers and superior officers, all of which will be under collectively negotiated wage increases for the last year of their contract fiscal year 2022. All other budgets should calculate cost of living adjustments at 0% for fiscal year 2022. And then I think it's helpful, Mr. Chairman, if I could offer my closing remarks in the memo with the outlook. Um, it is my hope that this directive will relieve the inevitable pressure on all budgets to accommodate level funding across all programs and services while bearing the weight of fixed and mandated costs outlined above. I have intentionally taken in a conservative approach to these budget instructions with the hope that this process will help us fully understand early in the budget process, the cause and effect of these instructions. The process I have outlined may be simple in scope, yet I fully recognize it will not be easy to bear going forward. While the outlook for fiscal year 2022 remains unclear, I am hopeful that these budget instructions will not require further budget reductions throughout our budgeting process, which in my opinion would result in a worst case, uh, budget for the town. And I ended by thanking, uh, our department heads and committee chairs for their dedication and efforts on behalf of our town. And I appreciate everyone's partnership and cooperation as we are about to embark on a difficult budget process for fiscal year 2022. Um, so again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I wanted to use this opportunity of the bully pulpit of the selectmen, if you will, uh, to convey these instructions because, uh, as I've said before, it's, uh, a radical departure from what we've been able to do the last few years. But, um, here we are.
Uh, thank you, Joe. Uh, you're right. This is a tough budget message. But underlies it from my, I can speak for the board from our perspective, is the uncertainty we're looking at going into, uh, next fiscal year and possibly the fiscal year after that. That it may take a year or two years before the economy to, uh, fully recover. And of course, that drives revenues we have available to us. The other underlying aspect of this is, is our top priority and reason we're being careful on the cost of living is we, we don't want to furlough or lay anyone off. And so we, we do have a finite revenue source that we're trying to stay within. So, Joe, thanks again for this hard work. I welcome other comments.
Yeah. While you were explaining it, Joe, can, can you send, send me a copy of your memo? Because I can't find it in either packet.
Certainly will do.
I did find it, Ed, in the, in the one that I just got it. I hadn't opened that up. We, Danell sent us a copy of an amended agenda packet about four o'clock this afternoon. So it was relatively late in the day.
Oh, I, I got the amended agenda at, at, I think it was 10:61.
There's a second one, the later one that is soon. It's not in the 10. And I didn't get a chance to open that until just now.
I, I haven't gotten the, the four o'clock version.
Okay. I will.
Wasn't an email. It was in Dropbox.
Well, I can't open the Dropbox.
Ed, I will forward it to you right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry, I just sent that along.
Okay.
So hopefully Selectman McManus will have that shortly.
All right. Other comments? I go, I guess I'll just go ask each of you to save a comment.
No, no, no comment.
Michael?
I have no comment either, Larry.
Don?
Only to say that these are tough times. I'd rather plan out how we're going to approach them rather than just letting them overtake us.
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe real lucky. We could expand. You know, who knows? This is where we are today. All right. Joe, thank you for that and for, I think it's important that this be aired publicly to get people understanding what we're trying to do. So move on to the next, move on to the next agenda item, which is the golf department report. And hi, Clem. You're muted.
Larry.
Michael?
Yeah, Larry, if, if, if I may, given the time and given what's left on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rate, let me just find the line item here. I'd like to move to approve rate and fee recommendations from the golf department for the 2021 golf season.
Second.
And I just did that based on, I mean, there was a very lengthy report in there. There was a great memo by Roman. We have a very capable golf director and we have a great golf committee. They spent a lot of time on this. They held a public hearing and I thought they did a great job. And I just, I have no questions for him. So that's why I made the motion.
Okay, I reinforce that they did a public, had a public hearing on October 20th of this year. Can, can I ask one question and very, give me a very brief answer because Michael's right, we're running late. The, there was some concern over the summer of the Chelsea system for, say, tee times. And do you feel that that's been resolved now that, that people are more comfortable with that? I'm not even sure there was a problem, quite frankly, but there were. That's kind of a double. I'm sure we know it was a problem, whether it was resolved.
Yes, I can answer that, Mr. Chairman. We have, at the golf committee level over the past few months, been working on recommendations for the, to edit the system for next year. But as you mentioned, I don't think there was a problem with it. The only problem was the incredible demand that was put on the golf course. The golf was just so popular this summer that it was in so much demand for one golf course. It put frustration on a lot of our annual pass holders. But we have been discussing it at the golf committee level and we have some recommendations for next year changes that we think will be helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Roman.
You're welcome.
Clem, I guess we'll, we'll ask you to speak another time when we enjoy your voice. But this, it's okay with me. We'll, I'll call for roll call and we'll move ahead. We have a motion and do we have a second?
Yes.
I seconded it.
Okay, thank you, Ed. I'll take a roll call then. Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I. And I hate to cut you off, but I think, as Michael said, you put such a complete report in there that is well, well done. Good, Ed. Moving on to the next item is authorize, authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for the Cape Cod Economic Development Council.
Larry, I move that we authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for the Cape Cod Economic Development Council, Regional Economic Development Organization grant request.
Second, Don.
The move in second, a discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call. I'm an I. Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Joe, you have us hold on that. So we'll, old business, we're moving back to the.
I just want to remind Clem that he's not muted. He can take his camera off, but he is still online.
Thank you, Mike.
You may have said there's some embarrassment, who knows?
That's right. I didn't want to start any other conversations.
Old business. I think, Joe, and I think your assignment last week, if you, you and Cindy get together and give us some recommendation on this one.
Yeah.
I was taught ladies before gentlemen.
Okay.
And I've always been taught age before beauty, so I'm going to turn it back to Joe.
All right, yeah, fair enough. You're on that one. Dang it. So, Mr. Chairman, all joking aside, well played, Cindy. Cindy and I have had several conversations and to be fair to Cindy, I, I will tell you that my take on this is that I, I'm not inclined to recommend a hardship exemption for liquor license fees because it's a distinct and finite group. And as we mentioned earlier, you know, the board will be able to support these establishments and, and through the requests to close for a period of time. And the next comment I make, I have to attribute to Selectman McCaskill, who first raised it, but I wholeheartedly agree with. So, and that is that this board has supported licensed establishments by which, the speed with which you authorized outdoor service of, of alcohol. The first day that establishments could be authorized, establishments were authorized in Harwich. So to me, that demonstrates that the town, through the Board of Selectmen, is offering good faith support of these businesses in the past and continue to do so in the future. But based on the memorandum I just read for the record on the budget, I can't in good conscience recommend, me personally, that the board grant exemptions. I think there's other ways to support establishments. And, and again, at the outset of my comments, I, I led the conversation with Cindy by saying that. So I will defer to the lady for her own opinions and input, having said mine.
Cindy, you can see all for her forever.
I know, right? So no, I am going to agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Powers and reiterate that yes, you have all been more than supportive and working very quickly to help these businesses get set up for other out of the box options. And, you know, we have to remember too, this is just one of many industries and businesses that have been burdened by all of this. So I think we stick with what we've doing, again, looking at what some may have to do in close for earlier than their licenses usually allow. So I think I'm in full agreement with Mr. Powers and then of course, what Mr. McCaskill has suggested as well.
Comments? Michael, your name's been bandied around, so I'll go to you first.
I really have no comments. Just, just to say that I will continue to support the businesses the best I can. And, you know, we did, we did, I looked at a lot of other towns as we fast tracked them getting open. Other towns took two weeks in charge and permit fees. So I do, I do believe we've done a lot and on this one I, I can't support. Which is not to say that if somebody came in with a real hardship, I think that they, they, I think there's probably a process for that already if the town administrator brought it forward. But I, I think it would take an awful lot of documentation to get me to change my opinion on this. We have counted on that revenue. We are projecting revenue losses. And I think that the, the entire town can't withstand any more losses.
Thank you, Michael. Save?
Thanks, Cindy, and thanks, Joe, for their work on this and keep the faith.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Save, comment?
No, I would just echo Michael's, Michael's comments on this. You know, if, if we do have a situation where someone truly has a hardship and, and can show it to us, then certainly we're in a position to consider that in, in individual cases. But overall, I, I think we stick with where we are.
Okay. Ed? Don, you're, most of you guys are muted. Don, you're on now.
I know. Counter to what my past performance is, I have no comment.
Ed?
Yeah, I think we don't, don't consider a general reduction, but if, certainly if there's a specific case, we're quite willing to take something up.
Thank you, Ed. I have nothing to add. I'm in agreement. We don't need to have a vote on this because we'll keep the status quo. I think we'll just move on at this point. Joe, let's move on to contracts and the floor is yours on these.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hopefully in your materials, you have this crib sheet, if you will, that talks about the contracts. First, the, the first item you have, I'm asking the board to hold off on action on that item as the contract as of this writing hadn't been returned yet by the vendor. Would then go to the next contract, which is item B, Phase Two Contract One, Sewer Construction Change Order Number Three with Robert B. Our Company for $109,895. I recommend approval, as you can see in the materials and the memo provided in the packet.
Discussion on this?
Yes.
I'd move that we approve Change Order Number Three with Robert B. Our Company for
Is there a second?
Second.
I just have one question. Carol, I see you're on the line. After you signed the, signed it, you've listed the numbers that 90,000, 91,000, approximately 20,000 that are different, don't hide. Where do those come from? The handwritten numbers at the, at the end of your document?
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Good, thanks. On the last page, you have where you have signed off. It's, you've, there's numbers listed, 135 and 84. They, they add up to the total of two, what, 219, whatever it is.
That's item C.
Yeah, that's the Rockhold boat ramp, Larry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got the wrong one. I'll come back to that then.
Thank you.
I was trying to get those numbers to match.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't recall seeing this change order. I'm, I'm not sure. I'm looking at your board agenda here. And I thought I, sorry, I thought I saw my signature was blank, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I'm in the wrong one. I'm in the wrong one. Ron Kova is what I was talking about.
Mr. Chairman, our finance director is correct. And if you look at the crib sheet at the beginning, we were awaiting the finance director's signature on that one because this item came in last week while she was away. So pushing it forward, giving it to the board, awaiting the finance director's approval.
I mean, you do have sufficient funds to support the change order.
Right, okay. So where are we? We want to make a motion that continues on your signature. Is that what you're asking for?
Larry, where we're at right now is a motion has been made and seconded to approve if, if I heard.
Let's take a, that's. Right. For her, it was continued on her signature, for her to sign and move ahead.
Signature.
Maybe reiterating. The motion is on the floor to, to move ahead, continue on the finance director's signature. Correct?
Yes.
Can I ask, Michael?
I have asked two questions. One is, I'd like to know the balance of the contingency fund on this project. And I don't need that tonight, but if I can get that, what's left now? We, we've spent a fair amount of the overages. I'd like to know what's, what the balance is. That's, that's number one. Number two is, at some point, it'd be nice to get a, and maybe we wait till the project is done. But at some point, it'd be nice to get a overview, maybe from Griffin, Dan Pelletier, CDM Smith. But an overview of what, and the, and the contract, what went right and what went wrong. One of these change orders is fairly significant and everything from milling. And it, and it was basically that based on where they dug the trenches and the very difference from where they actually milled. But going forward, this was a, this is an extremely large project, but peanuts in comparison to what we're going to spend over the next 30 years. So going forward, it'd be nice to know what went right and what went wrong. There's also a fair amount of angst with some people right now about pump stations. And apparently that there's, there's an issue with pump stations changing and the costs, the new costs of the pump stations. The board's kind of in the dark on this. And I would add, you know, the decision to go straight on 137 instead of zigzagging through a parking lot. I'd like to get an overview of what we, what we did right and what we did wrong before we start voting on new contracts, if that makes any sense to the board. My ask, of course. We would need the consensus of the board to get that done.
Well, I think it's always worthwhile to review what, what happened, what we could do better. That's sort of common sense. So maybe we could look at that.
The only other thing I'll point out is I do appreciate that the table showed that Carol's signature wasn't on in this. We all had a pretty detailed conversation about procurement and process. And in the procurement process, we all agreed that checklist was important. There is no checklist on any of the contracts tonight. The checklist does not appear to be in the packet. There's a memo from Joe, which I appreciate. The memo from Griffin or the department head, which I appreciate, and most of the procurement work. But I do not see a checklist in my packet, either version.
Correct. If I can, God.
So I, I, I obviously I'll listen to the town administrator's explanation, but I, I will, if it's not reasonable, I'm going to have to vote no because I did vote the procurement process last week very specifically, we all did. We all, we all agreed what we wanted and that does not appear to be in here. Lastly, the waiting, I appreciate Carol Capola being on the phone tonight to, to verify. But if we look at the boat ramp project, there was two accounts that that money was coming out of. But I have no idea knowing what A107325 is. Is the money coming out of the waterways user fee? So without, without knowing what those accounts are or an explanation of where that money's coming from, it's really not useful information to me.
Well, this gets around cold. That was, that was my mix up because that's what I was referring to in the wrong one. Actually, two numbers that didn't match up. Joe, can I ask you to respond to the, the checklist first?
Certainly. And then I have some answers to the others, some of the other raised. I'll, I'll try to be as direct and blunt as I can. I'm, I've been motivated for the last year. Um, I, I'll, I'll try to be as direct and blunt as I can. I'm, I've been motivated, um, for the last year to expedite procurement in every way, shape and form possible. Every one of the contracts before you this evening were all engaged and initiated before the procurement process. So I made a calculated decision to move these forward to the board, recognizing that I'm open to that criticism. And beyond that, that the board would be well within your rights to take no action on all these procurements. But I'm trying to balance out the backlog that we've had, get the procurements done as we continue to work through the process that was approved last week. So every one of these, um, items before you precedes the procurement process. I didn't want to hang it up myself on the checklist, um, but I would accept if the board did uh, this evening not take action on any of these procurements because of the absence of that checklist. But I need a little help and support and guidance to then go back to all of the departments and procurers that complain about the backlog. And so this was an effort to get all of these contracts moving forward. Um, if the absence of the checklist defeats it, I'm willing to accept that, lick my wounds and move forward.
We, on that point, we do, uh, Michael's objected, but we do have a motion and a second, so we'll vote this and see where we go.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, the question was asked about, uh, balance remaining. Um, if you look at the second page of the materials, uh, the information provided by the town engineer, the last paragraph indicates that, um, there is three hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars uh, eligible within the construction contingency number one, which is the funding source for the change order, which would cover the cost of this change order. And my math indicates that were you to adopt this change order, that would leave a balance of two hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars in that contingency number one.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any other comments on the, uh, first, the, uh, uh, change order number three for, uh, RB hour?
Last comment. I, I appreciate and respect the, uh, town administrator's explanation on why he put these forward and, and his willingness to have them not pass. However, in the last meeting, uh, I did say that that would be the last contract I voted without it being complete. And we did also hear the same explanation about the last batch of contracts we voted, um, that, that they had to be, that they were put forward because of a backlog. So last week, or not last week, before last, um, when we voted the procurement process, uh, I commented that I would not be able to vote them anymore if they weren't complete. Uh, but I want to let everybody, everybody involved in this process know that all of these contracts, um, the, the absence of the process not being followed as we voted, I, I do support, um, the change orders. I do support the, um, I support all of, all, all, all four of these contracts. Um, I did have one thing, Joe, in the contract on, on the, uh, oh, I will get to it. It's not, uh, it's not a.
Okay, forget it. Is there comments, additional comments on the, uh, RB hour change of order?
Well, now, Larry?
Uh, Ed, and then Steve?
I'd just like to, uh, indicate that I appreciate, uh, uh, Joe, uh, bringing these forward at the time. I, I know, uh, typically in, uh, the process of getting a change order approved, it's the review process is quite lengthy. Um, the contractor will have typically, uh, expend the funds because they needed to keep the project moving and at a certain point, um, it, it's necessary to, to get, get the approval done, so, uh, he has funds to, to, to pay, pay his costs and, and his labors.
Thank you. Steve, did you have a comment as well?
Uh, no, no, no comment, Larry.
Okay, Don?
Yeah, I basically agree with Michael, although I'll probably agree to these tonight, but I mean, that, that's something that I've been wrangling with for two or three years now. This, this preceded Joe. You know, getting all of the documentation.
All right, I agree with that. I'll, uh, I'll end up supporting it because we do have a backlog we're trying to work through, and I'd like to get that, get that done. Let me take a roll call on this. Uh, uh, Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Michael?
No.
And I'm an I, so it's four to one on the RB hour. This, uh, next on is a round code boat ramp and, uh, this one's one I referred to earlier, Carol. The, uh, I, I think your, uh, your numbers on your signature got to where the source of funds is coming from.
Mr. Chairman?
That confused me a bit. You have the hundred and eight, I didn't know those, your handwritten notes on that.
The meeting of twenty seventeen, the town voted to authorize, um, the round code boat ramp, um, project. And then in twenty twenty, the town authorized additional funds for that project. And that's why you're seeing two different line items.
That, that add up to the, uh, the two nineteen, basically.
Correct.
Article nineteen and twenty-one.
Correct.
Thank you. I, I wasn't quite following it. Other, other comments? I know, uh, Mike, why take your exception on the checklist? This is one we've been working on for some time, but we'll see where we go. Did you have another, you had something else on this one?
Yeah, I just want to verify that all funds are available for this now. There was a, there was a memo in there that stated that things are higher than the appropriation. Um, so is this now the second town meeting vote? We have all the money to do this project?
Um, yes, um, for the reasons mentioned. Can you, uh, just point out where you saw that, that phrase?
And, uh, give me one minute.
Are you speaking to me, Joe? I'm sorry.
No, no, um, no, Michael had mentioned some reference that he saw. Sorry, I apologize. Lachman McCaskill had mentioned a reference. I'm just trying to locate it.
It might have been in John Rendon's, uh, memo, but I'm, I'm looking, Joe.
Okay.
Actually, it was in the engineer's report to John Rendon.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
It was in the engineer's report to John Rendon is what my notes said. I'm still looking for it.
I think in the end, we're looking for a certainty that these funds will cover the cost. Uh, should be at the top.
I saw that.
My problem is, is I go through and I highlight the lines in yellow. And after I've done that, you update the agenda packet on me.
Uh, Joe, have you found the engineer's letter to John Rendon?
Uh, not yet. Griff, are you, um, familiar with the document in question?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I think, um, you might be referring to, so when we, when we went out to bid, um, it was the thought that we didn't have the funding available for the full project. So when we went out to bid, we had the contractors hold their bids for a longer period of time. I thought that we could go get through the, um, town meeting, um, you know, knowing that town meeting was going to be delayed. So the bid process, we, we had the, the, um, bidders hold their bid for, uh, almost a hundred and twenty days or beyond, such that we could get beyond town meeting and then sign the contract. So initially, we didn't have enough. That's why we went back to town meeting to get the additional funds to finish out the project and, and I think that's where we're at.
And the last three pages of the packet.
Page eighty.
Page eighty, okay. Uh, Ed?
Yeah, well, I don't know if it's page eighty or not, but the letter to, uh, from G E I um, to John Rendon dated March thirtieth. And you, uh, go down into it, the bid comparison, item one, we understand that town currently has an approved constructions budget, which is less than both bids received, but is proposing to seek additional funding at town meeting to complete this project. The project will be awarded based on the lowest responsive bid depending on a, on approved funding, and the funding was approved.
And that, that letter was from March thirtieth, and that was when we did the bid opening, um, and then went back to town meeting to get the additional funds. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. The only other comment I'd make is, Joe, when you get into, uh, and with this contractor, I'm really not worried about it at all. But as you read through the contract, uh, contract, it says that they'd be mostly completed by, uh, May first. There is no penalty, and I've noticed this in a lot of our contract, contracts, there is no penalty. If this goes on for, goes on and on and on and on. And the reason I bring that up is the nightmare that Chatham just went through with the observation deck. I think that project extended almost a year later and, and, uh, nobody was allowed to be on that observation deck. Town had to pay police officer details to keep people out of the back parking lot. Do we put anything in there that penalizes, um, at, at a monetary amount for contractors that don't?
Well, Ed, go back there. Well, Griff, before you do that, um, I think the reference made was to article two, time of completion, which is, uh, reference to substantial completion, um, by a certain date. Um, I'll confirm with council that that language, um, is, will, will work going forward. Meaning, um, I understand that to be an arful term under engineering and other experiences of substantial completion. Um, given that it's an arful term of engineering, I'll stop talking now and, uh, ask our town engineer to weigh in.
It's a very good question, and we have seen that with Chatham. Um, uh, so I have been working with KP Law about, um, in incorporating liquidated damages to, to our contracts, and we have started to do that with some of our more recent ones, um, upwards of, you know, five hundred dollars a day, um, if they're beyond their, their time limit. So that is something that we are looking to get in as we, you know, revamp and catch up on, um, on procurement.
Griffin, thank you. I, I would just comment that I know on the, uh, uh, you'd be able to find it in the, in the documents, John Rendon. And I'm not sure who did that procurement, but John Rendon got it in on the major Stafford Tuckett project. But I, I think at the time that was only three hundred dollars a day. And I'm thinking about Memorial Day weekend, I think it was John's, uh, estimated open date. And I know we extended a little bit, but in a case where a contractor like that gets another nine billion dollar job someplace else, three hundred dollars a day is not going to push them to finish a major project like this. So I think as we, we think of things like our boat ramps, um, which we get a significant amount of revenue from moorings and, and people using our waterways, I think that monetary amount should be, um, I, I'm sure that's a standard for it. But it, but if I was a contractor and it was three hundred dollars a day and I, I took a deposit on a much bigger job, it'd be taking the backseat for a little while. So I, I think that that's something that we need to put into our contract.
Yeah, we'll certainly discuss, discuss that with council.
Okay, um, uh, Don?
Yeah, I want to echo what Michael said, but I want to go a little bit deeper into the weeds, uh, to Griffin and to Joe. Uh, uh, speaking as somebody who used to contract for things, uh, that, there's no less a tie-in to time for, for for performance than there is getting the wrong spec item, uh, when you buy something. It, it forms the scope of a contract, and frankly, uh, one of the excusable delays, I mean, because if you had a liquidated damages clause in there, there are excusable delays, and you could make a case that that's why you're running late. But what isn't excusable is getting, you know, getting time, quantity, quality, or whatever forms the scope. Uh, you, you don't know what the second hospital would have done, and frankly, time, time means something and money, uh, to contractors. And Michael's right, uh, all of a sudden, we're jammed up, but a bigger city, uh, comes calling and then our project, uh, can have some negligible consequence if you slow it down. We really need, I, in my experience, this is not even new. The last twenty years, uh, this town does not default people and reprocure or hold them, uh, uh, liable for liquidated damages. And I think that's a big mistake.
Okay, sounds like, uh, Joe and Griffin and Carol are going to address that. I entertain a, uh, motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ed?
I'd move that we award the Round Cove Boat Ramp Reconstruction Contract to Robert B. Our Company, the amount of, uh, two hundred nineteen thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Second.
I'll take a roll call. Uh, Michael?
No.
Steve?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, so four to one. Uh, yeah, that's not to say we don't take your point, Michael, but I personally feel we need to move ahead and go press, go, go on.
Not, uh, not insulted at all. Thank you for that, Larry. I just feel like we got to do what we say we're going to do and vote we're going to.
Yeah. Uh, uh, Joe, you want to continue the contracts?
Um, sure, as you'll see, um, in the crib sheet and in the memorandum, uh, recommending approval. This is the, uh, construction demolition, demolition trailers for DPW. Uh, the contract would be, would be with KNL Holdings LLC, and the amount is one hundred forty-five thousand three hundred dollars. Um, and if I remember correctly from memory, uh, this is a procurement that goes back, I believe, to, um, two thousand nineteen town meeting. Um, so I would ask the board to, um, approve and execute.
So the source of funding is an article from town meeting for, uh?
Uh, correct.
Discussion? Ed, go ahead.
Question, this is for the, the construction of demolition trailers?
The construction and demolition trailers, CND trailers.
Oh, okay.
Other questions?
No, I'd, uh, move that we, uh, award, uh, the contract for construction and demolition trailers to KNL Holdings LLC for one hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred dollars. Second.
Other discussion? I'll take a roll call. Uh, I'm an I on this. Uh, Michael?
No.
Don?
Reluctantly, yes.
Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Thank you, uh, Joe. Next, uh, contract?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next one is the, um, Industrial Protection Services LLC uh, for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. Um, this would be awarded to, excuse me, that would be awarded for the amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, as you'll see in the memos, I would recommend board's approval to execute the contract.
Uh, Joe, can you expand on that? Because I don't have that right in front of me. There was, there was an offsetting grant that was, uh, covering part of that?
Uh, correct. As you'll see in the crib sheet there, uh, let me just grab that again. Uh, the grant offset was three hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars, so that the town's cost is actually thirteen thousand seventy-six dollars. And let me jump right in and say that. Any further questions? I will defer to our chief who is on the call.
Uh, Dave, any, uh, fire chief? Dave, the blacky, comments?
Boom, Larry?
Uh, we pulled up something else. Did you mean to do that? Uh, thank you. Ed?
If you remember a time of, uh, approval of the Warren article, um, this is, this was the article, the item that I objected to being classified as a, a capital item less than fifty thousand dollars. Our cost was less than fifty thousand dollars, but the cost of the item were, were way in excess of fifty thousand.
Right. So, yeah, I do remember that, but would that influence your vote tonight, Ed?
Um, no, not at all, but, uh,
But it explains it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, David? Cause any, back comment?
Yeah, I don't really have anything more to add. This is the, the grant we wrote that took 500 plus thousand dollars off the capital plan for next year, replaces all our breathing apparatus, replaces the compressors in both stations. The company that we're dealing with is a company that serviced all our compressors for the last 15 years, very reputable, very responsive to our needs. The equipment is state of the art and, and will meet the needs of the department for the next 15 to 20 years. So it's a great opportunity with very little impact to the town in terms of money. So we appreciate the opportunity to put it forward to the board and we appreciate getting it from the federal government. So.
Thank you, Chief the Blank. Entertaining a motion?
Larry, Larry, I'd like to move that we award contract purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus to Industrial Protection Services LLC, the amount of $395,000. And at the same time, make the opportunity to thank the department for seeking the grant they did in offsetting a town cost.
Thank you, Ed. And Steve, I think you were trying to, to second it.
Yeah, I was. I seconded.
Thank you. I'll take a roll call. So with you, Steve?
I would be pleased to do that.
Don, go ahead.
I want to ask a sort of question here. Are we getting into town hall to sign this? This is a general question.
I was going to speak to the signatures at the end of all the contracts.
Okay.
Larry, if I may?
Michael, yes.
I just wanted to echo Ed's comments and to thank the chief and staff for the hard work on getting this grant. And David, I don't know how much of the call you've been on. I'm voting no on the contract and not because I don't support it. I support it 100%.
We all agree with the hard work, Dave. Good job. I'll take a roll call. Vote ten. Ed, I'll start with you.
All right.
Steve?
Aye.
Don?
I agree with, I agree with Michael, but I'm going to vote aye.
Yeah. Michael? You're muted.
No.
And I'm an aye. So four to one. And Dave, when will you, when will you get these in?
Um, so talking to the representative, they're about six to eight weeks out, but with the holidays in there, might push it back a little bit. They definitely slowed down a little bit because of COVID and how many people that could have been planned. But I would expect that by the end of January, we'll be, everybody will be trained and they'll be on the trucks and we'll be ready.
And you'll, and help you protect, protect. It's great. Okay.
Thanks. Thank you for the support.
Continuing on, Joe?
Uh, so then, Mr. Chairman, the remainder of the contracts really are just the board being the final party to execute the grant agreements between the Board of Selectmen, the appropriate party, and the Community Preservation Committee.
Larry?
Yes.
I move that we approve the grant agreement between the Board of Selectmen and Pleasant Bay Community Bodom.
Second? I'll take a roll call. I'm an aye. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye. I move that we approve the agreement between the Board of Selectmen and Chase Library.
Second.
Take a roll call. Michael, I'll start with you this time.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we approve the agreement between the Board of Selectmen and Lower Cape Cod Community Development Company.
Second.
I'll take a roll call. I'm an aye. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye. I move that we approve the agreement between the Board of Selectmen and Howard Housing Authority.
Any discussion on this with Don? This is kind of in your area.
It's just because it has housing in the words.
I'll take a roll call. Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, Joe, we've very quickly gone through those. I guess the partying comment will be how we're going to sign these.
Um, so there's really no restriction on the board coming into administration and town hall to sign, because you're coming straight into the administration. We're conducting all protocol. So I'm going to have staff reach out to all of you directly on setting up times to have all the documents that were voted to be executed tonight signed. And it's also a chance to give you some mail that's been stacking up as well. And then going forward, we won't have this issue because we'll be meeting generally as a group.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the town administration's report then.
Um, thank you. And I just have two. I was hoping to have three items. First, just let the board know that all the license renewals materials have been distributed as required. And as one of our previous speakers mentioned, ABCC requires those forms to be signed and returned by all applicants by November 30th. And establishments have been made aware of that. Wanted to let the board know that we're going to be resuming the committee presentations to the board. You may have noticed that we held off on those. And that was so that I could develop the budget message so that as you met with the committee chairs on their presentations, you could also possibly engage in discussions about the budget. So those will begin the first week in December and take us through, all the way through the month of February. And then lastly, I suspect that you do not have, and I was hoping you did, but there should have been an offer letter in your packet. Very pleased to announce that internal candidate, Melissa Mallett, is, has been chosen to be executive assistant in the building department, which fills a vacancy that I've tried, tried twice for to fill. I will get that to the board and hope that everything would be in order for Melissa to start in that role permanently, full-time with the town on November 30th.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Moving next then to Selectmen's reports. Yeah, I try to read you guys going from one end, but you keep switching on me. Location switches. So Don, I'll start with you.
Yeah, as I indicated earlier, I mean, the one thing that I do want to bring up, having seen the Conservation Commission's recent votes on the fogs, it would be an understatement to say I'm disappointed. I know that families probably feel this way, can wait on their own. Again, I really dislike overselling and underperforming. I mean, if you go to town meeting and you can, you need to tell people, yeah, vote on this, and this way you can get conservation land and historic fog that we can operate as some sort of open history book, then please don't, in spite of voters that approve that by saying, yeah, but we're not going to do it that way. I mean, because fogs are irrevocable. You take out the pump station, the pump house, and that's it. So, so I'm just taking this opportunity to publicly vent. It just, it doesn't feel like you're, you're upholding your end of the deal with the townspeople.
Yep. Good point, Don. Michael?
I just want to, I'd echo Don's, Don's comments on disappointment of the Conservation Commission. I, I believe, I know our conservation agent herself recommended that this bog go out. And maybe not on this round, but previous, she was in support of leasing that bog. And, and I didn't get me, I got reached out by, reached out to by several people that asked if that decision could be appealed. I don't believe it can, because it is a regular court. I suppose that that might be something for them to look into for us. There is somebody, at least one person that's interested in leasing that bog and turning it back into a bog. But for some reason, the commission thinks it would be better to look like great swamp bog. Very disappointed in the Conservation Commission for that decision. And I know that the board had voted unanimously to support cranberry growing on that bog. So our voices were completely ignored as well.
Yep. Ed? Or Steve?
I got nothing.
Larry, I got one more thing though.
Go ahead, Don.
Uh, I, I got another email from Dave Ryder about the ZBA, and I'm just kind of reaching out publicly to say I appreciate that. There's really no other board that you get, really have full membership rights. If you're a backup, in a particular meeting, you can vote on anything in the ZBA if, if you're an alternate. So I, I just appointing one of the alternates to one of the vacant positions isn't the only solution. So I'm going to take this opportunity once again for anybody who hung in there for the whole meeting, that we really could use some applicants for the ZBA. It's an extremely important body, and it's a way to be able to serve your town.
Thank you. I actually thought I had someone, but I couldn't convince him at the last moment. So I haven't given up. All right, I don't have nothing more. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, roll call, Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you.